Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the planning commission.
City of Athens, 18th of August at 12 through 13 p.m. First establish a quorum. We have enough to hold a meeting for. And the next thing is to administer an oath. If you'll -- anybody who is intending to speak, please stand. Yeah, I guess I'll make them all stand. Do you swear the truth, to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help you God? Do?
I do.
I hope you're not. Okay. I hope that wasn't offensive. Disposition of minutes for the -- let's see. Time flies. The 4th of August or something like that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad you're on top of things. You should be running this meeting. Okay, so any additions or corrections? Did you?
No.
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. They are approved. First case is 1611, the North Court Street Hotel, 65 North Court Street. It's a Title I review. And so would whoever is working this case. I guess maybe Mr. Sarai? What do you want? Yes or no?
Well, they can go forward and present, but let me read my spiel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're addressing Title 41 preliminary site. Oh, this is actually a actual site plan review. 65 Court Street for Athens, Ohio. Summary: The application is for construction on existing building, 65 North Court Street, previously occupied by the Athens County Historical Society. This will involve alterations to existing first and second floors with the addition of a third and fourth floor, changing the building into a four-story hotel with 30 rooms. The plans were submitted for evaluation with consideration to how the grade is calculated. The average rate calculations in accordance with the International Building Code, as prevented by RVC, Mr. Valancourt, provided for an average being calculated, the calculation when establishing the height of the building versus the actual floor level. The plans were reviewed and verified by city engineer Andy Stone and myself. This will permit the overall height of the building to be in accordance with Athens City Code Bulk Schedule B3 restrictions set at three and a half stories. But viewing from Court Street elevation will provide for an actual four stories. The architects are RVC. My property name again is 65 Court Street Hotel. Location again is 65 North Court Street. Property status is in Title 41. I won't read through the whole item here, it's quite lengthy, but I will make note of concern on parking. They provided one for each two bedrooms, which equals 15 parking spots. What they said, they had seven onsite, eight offsite at 85 North Court Street. But in reference to that 85 North Court Street, upon review, it was discovered that rental permits for 85 North Court A, B, and C, referencing ordinance 0-14-90, deed restrictions of 78 parking spaces must be available for 71 residents and seven for commercial established by a PUD, Plan Unit Development. Recommend that approval be reserved until further clarification or an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
We had them last week.
We do.
We do?
I think it's in our packet.
Yes.
Coffee's here.
Right here. Got it.
I got it.
Are those thicker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Back them the size of all paper, please. Can't see anything anymore.
Okay, so a little more detail on the project. As Rick has introduced it, it's currently a two-story building. And according with city code, we're not allowed to have residential on the first floor. So the first floor will be check-in laundry room, probably a lounge or that sort of elevator, stairwells to the other floors, egress. And then the next three stories, the second floor would have eight units on it, and the third and fourth floor would have 11 units per floor. So a total of 30 units throughout the whole building. The height issue, we certainly have spent some time with the city, different with Rick and the others, in explaining the state and international code about determining the ground plane. So that would, so the total height of our building, though, from the Court Street side would be about 50 feet, but with the six-foot, whatever percent, it is actually 44 feet, some several inches, which is below the 45. So we intend the building to be fully sprinkled. We have, we'll have two weighted stairwells in the building for safety. We'll have a new elevator installed that will deal with, will service four floors. And we currently have a scheme with the dumpsters on the site itself, which actually take up two parking spots. Anne will address this issue after me, where there is a block, there is a block dumpster located behind the jewelry store. And we would prefer to have it offsite. And then at that point, we'd have our two additional parking spots onsite, and we would need only six then offsite. And she'll explain better how we can negotiate the deed restricted areas versus, they also have a lot over on North Carpenter, North Carpenter, that they can kind of juggle around and accommodate the parking for 85 North Court that can accommodate that. So we understand we have to increase the size of the water lines and all the issues, fire safety. And once we get city's approval, we'll be hiring all the engineers required to prepare drawings that will, that will make this a safe and up-to-code building. She'll also talk more about, I think this is exciting project because, and I've been here long enough to remember when the Berry Hotel was here, and some of the other hotels that were located on Court Street. And there's a, there's a historical tradition of that kind of thing in the past of the Athens. And it is, I think sorely missed that there, all the motels and hotels have been located now out on the perimeter of town as opposed right in town where, I think, access to the town is, would be much better for people visiting that way.
I'll open it up for parking, for discussion. Anybody who wants to talk. Oh, my goodness. It's not meant to ask about parking.
Questions?
Yeah, anybody who wants to, just have at it.
Well, I think we need to try to resolve the parking. And then along with that, the fire chief had indicated in the internal review about the dumpster enclosure, so parking and dumpsters at the same time, maybe?
You want me to talk?
Yeah, I'll let, give to Anne to.
Do I have to say?
Yes.
It's, it only hurts for a little while, then you forget you're there.
Okay.
But we did the parking issue.
That's what we're asking.
Okay, now the dumpsters, okay.
So parking?
No, it's right there, okay.
Anne, would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Anne Cornwell, and my brother David and I are doing this project together. We're really excited about it. I think I've, when I was a child, my father, my parents bought 27 North Court Street, which was known as the Athens Hotel. And as a child, I did a lot of playing in the corridors of that hotel. And I have a lot of fond memories, you know, of running around. It had big white staircases. I mean, it's kind of very, you know, Victorian inside, and I've, I've really always loved hotels. And I'm excited to do something that I think this street needs. If you go back in history, you know, there were times, I'm sure there was three and four hotels on the street, and we don't have any today. And, you know, I think it's just a vital thing that, you know, a town like ours should have it. So if anyone knows me well, they know one of my biggest goals is safety. You know, I, you know, I like to have as many cars away from Court Street as possible. So we're going to have a valet, and we're going to be moving as many cars out, you know, of Court Street. My goal is for somebody to pull up in the front, they get their bags out, and their car's gone. And then, you know, maybe we bring them back to their car in the end, you know? So, you know, I don't want a lot of movement in and out. You know, there's kids walking around that spot a lot, cars coming in and out. So if we need, and I was told either eight spaces or six spaces. Another thing, you know, I would like to use the dumpsters behind Cornwall Jewelers. I believe the whole, you know, the bars in that area use them. Everybody at 85 North Court uses that dumpster. And I think Bronies uses that dumpster. So I really like things like that out of view. I, you know, would hate to be on Court Street looking at a dumpster that we didn't need to look at. So we have parking available to us both at 85 North Court Street, and there is a lot at 56 West Carpenter. And what we were thinking could work is kind of, you know, if we need six spots or eight spots, it's a low number of spots, maybe a swap, in essence, you know? Like, we take six spots at 85 North Court behind the jewelry store, and then we move that requirement up to 56 West Carpenter, just kind of like boom, boom, boom.
Help me out with 56 West Carpenter. I'm trying to place where that is. Is it beyond North Congress or beyond Congress?
It's just beyond. If you go to the end of Court Street, go left. You know where that lot is where you have to kind of go up? There's kind of like a ramp. There's a big gray apartment building. Then right next to it, it's, it's kind of elevated. So up there is a parking lot that, to my knowledge, is not tied to anything. It is a parking lot that we rent, you know, to students, you know, coming in, you know, any, any students really. So it's not for any particular property.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Okay. It's a very large parking lot.
Since that was created by ordinance, I assume we'd have to go back to council and get that ordinance modified.
And I don't know what the current code says about planned unit development, but it was there too. So it would be part of that process.
Modifying the entire planned unit development?
Well, I mean, the one for those apartment buildings and the pizza place and all that. I mean, I'm not sure what it says anymore, because it's been changed a few times from when it was written.
I mean, or the other thing is, we just use 40, I mean, we're going to be moving these cars anyway, you know? So we just use 40 West Carpenter for our six spots. And I think, you know, as far as the distance goes, my brother walked it today, and he said it was 135 steps from, I think he probably started out, I don't know if he started exactly at 85 or 65, but he said 135 steps. So these are all very short distances.
Your valet, is there any way to put that in off on the alley?
Put the what?
The valet servicing off the alley as opposed to stopping right in front of a meter on Court Street?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Furness.
You are?
You are?
Okay.
I looked on SD 121. We're having to pull over on the side of the building, right next to the alley.
So are you saying use Rose, using Rose Alley as your, as the valet, as you're coming through?
But it's still on their property, but it's just right there.
Sure, yeah.
But is Rose?
What's a state one?
Do you know if it's a private street?
Thank you.
Is it a public street or a private street? Rose Alley. Public or private? I think it's private.
So you've got a passenger.
Somebody that has a library.
Okay, okay. I contend, I don't know. I think it's a real street.
I think it is as well.
I've actually been called out on the radio show from a longtime Athenian. She called in to tell me it was Rose Avenue.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
But it's okay.
Anyway, this is on their property. I found it, the passenger loading, so just didn't say valet parking, but I can't.
I'd like to know if it is a private street, because for a while it was, depends who reads it. So it's going the right way to make a loop?
Yeah, Uptown is unique in terms of having the centralized recycling and garbage collection areas. And that's been an effort that's been ongoing over the last five years to get them off the front of the sidewalks and street areas.
I actually couldn't believe they were taking those spaces, two parking spaces for the containers. I was hoping they'd find someplace else.
Well, she needs them now.
No, I know. I agree. I mean, of all the things that.
And we will be recycling. It's another thing.
Good.
So given the number of people who are already using that dumpster behind the Cornwall Jewelers, would there be a need to increase the number of dumpsters? Is it just one right now, or would it have to?
Oh, really? Don't you have all of them? Don't you have the glass?
There's, the last time I was back there, it was, yes.
Sort of franchise, recycling franchise location as well? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, you know, maybe we could go a little bigger? I don't know, you know?
Get one of those multi-use, like we have out back for mixed recycling?
You mean the big blue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's back there now. There might be some of those actually already. But yeah, I'm really, recycling's really important to me, you know, so whatever it takes. But I like it hidden. I like recycling, but I don't like to see it all.
I heard another place other than 56 West Carpenter. Did I hear 40?
40 West Carpenter is, is, no, that's, I shouldn't have said that. That's a house. 56 West Carpenter is the parking lot address.
I think I remember from our preliminary conversations about this at the last meeting, that you talked about the area beside the accessible parking space being turned into kind of the access lane. Anybody remember this conversation?
I can show you that on the.
Okay, well, actually, my specific question is, especially since that passenger loading zone is just there, are you going to have bollards or anything there to protect that, the part that comes out beyond the, the lake?
Okay. What, once we begin to develop, design more, we'll then determine where the bollards and will locate them for protection.
Okay.
Can they be decorative?
I asked if they could be decorative.
Historic.
Especially since.
Anything that.
Right there. We could look into concrete bollards. There's any number of type of bollards. Make that, especially since it's the main entry point, make it pretty and not just be the standard yellow.
Right.
So the relocation of the dumpster behind Cornwall Jewelers, it would bring you up to eight, eight spaces, because you'd gain two with that, correct? So we're.
Nine, I think we get nine, nine.
Nine, so nine spaces. So we're talking about.
What's that?
Valeting five, six, six vehicles.
Yeah.
In a walkable distance.
I will too, but look at how it.
Or more, you know, probably we'll move as many valet, you know.
As you need to.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We'll probably, you know, most, everybody I imagine would be valet.
Sure.
Oh, it's okay.
So what's our count in terms of parking spaces now?
We have nine if we use the jeweler dumpster, so we would need six.
The total is 15.
Okay.
So for the nine outside, we need six.
Six.
So the width of the dumpster enclosure space as it is now is 27 feet, at least?
Two parking spaces, two parts, 20 feet.
Okay.
And it's also taking into account the relocation of your gas meter?
Yes.
So it would get pushed further back?
Which we have bollards protecting that for sure, but yes.
Right, because right now it's sitting there right on the edge of what would be the dumpster site, and so that would be pushed further west.
Right now it's up against the existing building, so we need to move it down a little bit, but we could put it closer to Court Street and just locate it relatively in the same location it is now. It'd be okay.
Are you talking about a dumpster there now?
No, they're talking about the gas.
Right, I mean, that was one of the fire chief's concerns, so that's what I'm trying to, is what you're asking.
Was the gas meter itself?
Yeah, dumpster enclosure would need to move.
But now they, you three are right.
So if it's eliminated from this, it's, okay. So that eliminates that issue, all right.
It's not impossible to get the gas company to move it farther, away out of our parking to the other shops. I don't want, until I sell how much that costs, I don't want to.
How much? So could you ask me, or could I ask a question? I want to know about the sanitary sewer. It says it comes out about midway, and the proposed sanitary, the Buckley Group have it going up.
Andy's.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. Is this the same thing? And then the storm sewer also, is, you know, is that incorrect or correct?
Yep, it says the same thing.
The same thing?
Shot incorrectly.
Okay. And are any of those shared? It looks like the storm sewer on this map, which is incorrect, I've heard, are shared. I'm really concerned, and my concern is just the olden days as usual. We had a problem with.
You have an echo on your.
Oh, I do? Probably because I have my finger over it. Rose Avenue seems to end before Court Street, according to the Buckley Group, and I don't know what that means. That's just a.
That's a setback.
Okay, so, but the sewer line can go through it?
Yes, yes.
Because we had a problem across the street going down Furn Alley with a used, after we built for $500,000 a new storm, our new sanitary, we had a problem. It may have been operator error on our side, but it was, I, does, has Andy looked at how much demand this will place? All of these, like even the one across the street at Genesis, you know, the additional flushing? How soon will it be before we have to go and showering and swimming pool or whatever else they have? I mean, how long will it be before we have to redo that sewer? Because Kate Ledwith, you know, I know you're about ready to talk, I'm sorry. Kate Ledwith's house is down there, and you start looking at the number of people per square mile, or per square foot, and we're talking about a lot. And there, it's a demanding situation. I would like some, at least question of this, of the city engineer before the Buckley Group starts, and, you know, maybe shared cost among all these new proposals to make them higher. Well, for sure it'll go down, because it's a gravity, but.
Well, I mean, the Furn Alley improvements that we did were fairly significant. Andy has not indicated, and I think he would have if he had that, so let's, he did.
He has a fee?
He's assuming, these are his assumptions with the employees and 30-unit hotel, and then we take it from that EPA flow yard.
Well, I know, that's what I was hoping.
Okay.
So he did it. It doesn't, you know, I hadn't seen.
He would have, I think he would have, we would have had a red flag here.
What about the cumulative? How about the effect of Genesis III and all the rest? You know, I'm just wondering at what point it'll be surcharged.
Oh, I don't, I mean, what's before us today is this, the North Court Street Hotel.
And he's going to do in-depth, and Buckley Group is going to do in-depth planning, you said, of the.
It's been engineered to just a new eight-inch line from the start of site to the city, to that manhole city. A new sewer.
And I wonder what, and crossing.
From there on, you guys have recently put a new line in there, right?
Yeah, we had a problem.
Storm.
But we have.
Storm or sewer?
We had both.
Yeah, both.
We had both. It's just, I'll tell you.
Sewer, I mean, storm, we're not going to be creating more water with the storm.
We hope not.
We would hope not.
With sewer, yeah.
With sewer, we're not going to use sewer.
That was the beginning of the end.
You'd think they're not there every day, these people. It's not like an apartment where they're there every day. I mean, plenty of these rooms will be, you know, during the week, probably won't be used.
But we do have to plan for it in action.
Yes, exactly.
You will be charged for, based on our flow rate.
But as far as the flow goes, it might be less than what an apartment would do.
Sometimes these are actual opportunities to improve some of the infrastructure in the Uptown area.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? I thought we had some good questions.
So we're down to needing six parking spaces, and I'm really not sure what that would require from council here.
I would say that I'm really pleased that we've been finding where the deed restrictions are. We have, and so thank you for doing that and doing it well, because there are a lot of times we were operating in the dark.
I should do it.
Well, I would imagine, that's why I get paid the big bucks. No, I'm just being, I'm sorry. Flip, we need our J back. Okay. So what's your, what's your suggestion?
I'm not sure. That's.
I think it's a good use.
I do too. I'm just trying to get through.
I think we should see what we have to do.
Right. What, what the steps would be. And this is clearly outlined that.
Has to be leased.
That the property was.
So is the question, the procedure for how we address, like, or how city council will address this?
Yeah, how do we, and do we, are we making a recommendation? And does that mean that that's the next step? That it, would we be able to make a recommendation to city council for the changes in the deed restricted parking?
So is this a preliminary site plan review or the final?
I got the impression it was final.
Okay, because it's listed as preliminary on that.
He just received this before meeting. Comments from different apartments. Sometimes we get that in a couple weeks, and we take all the changes on the drawings to light it up. We're just now receiving this.
In our defense, the Title 41 has this 15 business day that really binds us if people are off on military duty, or a family vacation, or what have you. That's why you're just getting it today. But Christie and I, we're going to get together and we're going to review this, this specific, so.
Get the people that made us put it in to.
I know.
It's Larry.
But we, you know, we need your approval. We can't, the owners can't finance all these engineers that have the need to, to respond to.
And that's how it happened last time. It was a planning commission memo, now that I'm looking at this, a planning commission memo to city council.
I guess, but that's really, this is really pertinent to the dwelling units. Oh, is that Cornwall Jewelers now taken into it?
Yeah, my understanding, this one.
Because that was really the, the tall buildings with the.
It was the mixed residential and commercial development.
Those three buildings that are there?
Three separate four-story buildings.
So it doesn't really pertain to this, does it?
Other than.
I mean, I would like to at least.
Seventeen of the 59 spaces on the adjacent property under 10-year lease.
Okay, then 10 years have certainly passed.
Passed, I have no idea.
1990, I believe.
So.
I'm just.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to think of, so I think, I think how we phrase this is one thing, but I think definitely before this comes, before city council, you need to make a determination in where those parking spaces are going to come from, and go through the, the legal process of creating new deed restrictions, if that.
Not leases.
Would it be just simpler, because the cars are going to be going up to 56 West Carpenter, to just apply for these six spots to be there? And to me, that seems a lot simpler. I don't really understand everything you're talking about, but, I mean, that's where the valets are going to be taking them, so could we just do that?
Well, I think my long-term concern is that in 30 years, when another body meets, and maybe ownership has changed hands of some of these properties, and it's not, it's not been legally registered, that this is how this is going to be handled.
Yeah.
Potential problems can arise. But so, but it's not, yeah, so that's why I'm saying a deed restriction.
But as opposed to changing the ordinance previously.
Yes.
Applying the six needed deed restriction to.
Yeah, that's, I'm absolutely fine with that. It's just a matter of having, having it.
Well, I think my long-term concern is that in 30 years, when another body meets and maybe ownership has changed hands of some of these properties and it's not, it's not been legally registered, that this is how this is going to be handled. Potential problems can arise. But so, but it's not, yeah, so that's why I'm saying a deed restriction.
But as opposed to changing the ordinance previously?
Yes.
Applying the six needed deed restriction to...
Yeah, that's, I'm absolutely fine with that. It's just a matter of having, having it legally, just having, having it registered and having it on the books so that...
Yeah, and I don't know the procedure to get a deed restriction.
Is it through the auditor?
Lawyer? How many of them?
It's a simple process. It's not complicated.
He just engaged and recorded, and then it's done.
I mean, is it possible today to get an approval pending that, doing a deed restrictor at 56?
You own both properties.
You're asking for a vote, is what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah. We can get going with the other stuff, because it is, you know, and I know we can work that out, we can do that, that's...
As long as it's done, as was mentioned, as long as there's historical record as to that these six spaces are coming from that property.
Yes.
And with the relocation of your, of the dumpsters behind Cornwell Jewelers, I mean, I'm in favor of that. I think that's, that's smart.
And with the, one thing I'd like to see is that the architects would consult, or Buckley Group or whoever, would consult with our engineer, make sure there's no issue that he sees.
One more time.
One more, yeah, absolutely, at this point. Because we're having faith in you. We're sort of investing faith in you that it's going to happen.
Well, we don't want to back up either.
No.
We're on the same team on that.
Yeah.
Before we blame.
And I'll be cleaning it.
I like this. I think this is a great use of this space. I would concur with the need for a hotel on Court Street. I think it's long overdue.
So how about a motion?
How are we phrasing this?
Christie, you're going to help us out here, right?
Like, I'll try to make the motion and hold holes in it as we go. So I move to approve Title 41 for 65 North Court Street with the stipulations that parking, additional parking spaces be addressed through a deed restriction on an off-site property. And that the architect work with the city engineer to address sanitary, any sanitary sewer concerns.
Just infrastructure.
And...
Infrastructure.
Could we just say infrastructure instead, sewer?
Any infrastructure concerns. And, and the stipulation that the dumpsters, as shown on the current plans, will be removed and replaced by two additional parking spots. And trash and recycling facilities will be off-site at an approved location.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If it passes, four zero, the approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Communications. The Genesis III building at 20 East State Street, Title 41.
We have witty, bitty, bitty ones.
Yeah. Thank you. For Beyonce, you know, this will help. And this is a preliminary?
Yes, it's just a little, I'm just introducing it.
Okay.
And now you guys will, the different departments will review the drawings and make comments to it. This, the intent of this is the Old Matters Building, which is where Passion Works and Zoe's are currently located on East State Street. And the intent is to, after our structural engineer has been on-site, that we're going to add two stories to this one-story building. And have 18 bedrooms, four, three, four-bedroom units and two, three-bedroom units in those two stories above grade. Again, fully sprinkled.
Four or two bedrooms?
We're going to have an elevator installed. And we, we have no problem with parking. We have 27 parking spots either on Court, or on State Street or down off of Fern Street behind the building that is owned by the, by the property owners. So we need 18 for, for the apartments, and we need nine, nine for commercial. So we have, we have 27 parking spots there on site.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
I just have listed preliminary, and I just touched on parking real quick, and I think required 27, they do have 29.
We are, we're certainly within all the bulk requirements zoning-wise, height, everything else.
So who's the developer on this?
This is Mike LaRue. And he has, I think he's in, he's in partnership with two other gentlemen, and I've, Joel, Joel, I've forgotten.
Are you dead?
No. Goldsberry, that's right. Kevin Goldsberry is also part owner.
I'm confused. I thought, I wrote down four two-bedrooms and three three-bedrooms, and that doesn't, the math is not adding up for me.
There are three, four bedrooms.
That's 12.
Three, four bedrooms.
And then two, three bedrooms.
No two bedrooms.
Yeah, so that's six, eight, total 18.
I was wondering who parks in that place right now, in that block that used to be Magic Diddler Lock?
They, they currently are renting them out as student rentals.
Because they were pretty...
Off-site, off-site rental spots.
How about the ones down below? It's quite a, quite a distance down there.
There's some pictures of that.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we're going to have a, we're going to have a stairwell, we'll have a stairwell that accesses out of the building and all the way down to the back.
All the way down to the bottom?
Yeah, to the back.
Who owns the property on the back here?
Kate Ledwith?
They do.
I think it's Kate Ledwith.
I mean, do you even own this property?
Well, LaRue owns it.
Genesis owns most of it.
Yeah.
Are any of her tenants currently leasing spaces there?
No, because they, she has parking underneath her, on her building. And I was there yesterday, and there was only two or three cars there.
But I don't see it.
But it was, I guess, early for students.
Can you show me? Not today, they're on the Fern Alley.
It's on, it's on page one of your blueprint. So you've got 15 PM, they're listed all, they're itemized on there, all the property under the 200 feet.
So this is...
This, everything in the yellow is on by Genesis.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so there's the building.
It's hard to really know, because they all have different names.
So it is frontage on Fern as well as...
They do, yeah, they have a driveway on Fern.
And East State Street.
So it's access is a better way.
You know, we're continuing, go down this...
Frontage on an alley.
Yeah, this odd path of what is frontage and what is a story and what is a basement, so...
This has three basements, three stories of basement.
Pardon me?
This building has three stories of basement.
Three stories of a basement?
Right, two, I'm sorry, two.
And in all honesty, it's really, you have a basement, and then you go up a little ways, and then there's an upper area, but the upper area does not have any kind of flow.
Where are the rental units going to be?
On the second and third floor.
Yes.
Over the building.
So what's in the back of the building basement now isn't going to change?
No, it's a barn shelter. Something like that.
They've tried to develop this property, I remember nightclubs, I've heard all kinds of things, wood shops, a lot of different things have tried to be in the lower levels of that building in the past.
What is in the lower level?
Precision...
Precision imprints.
Yes, precision imprints.
Right now, and there's, there is a little apartment, but it's not part of that process.
It's the building next door.
It's the building next door.
It's the building next door.
Because precision imprints is, the entrance into precision is not the Matters Building, not being entered from here, it's...
There is a stair access from...
There's a stair access to the basement.
Down to the...
Down to the basement, if you want to call it that.
Oh, through the basement.
But they, all the employees come in from the back Fern Street side.
Right. There's actually a garage door to access it from the side. I think I have, I have probably a picture that...
Picture's on there.
If I may add, they had presented a previous plan where they had a huge deck on the backside. And I asked that they not do that, and they've since come back and with a redesign, because that area tends to have a lot of activity during certain periods of the year, so...
How low are you? This looks to be...
They adjusted the plans.
Are these little bitty balconies all the way up front? Tell me how little bitty.
What, six feet wide? Six or eight feet at the most?
At the most.
Yes, we responded to his concern, and we've made him look narrower, and they set back, they don't project out on the street, they sit back off the front facade of the building.
I can just say that our forces in blue have had things hurled from them, from balconies in the uptown area, so they're always, of course, they haven't had a chance to review this yet.
So you don't think things will ever change, how they're overgrown?
I know they'll get worse because of the matter.
Yes, well, that's a popular, not hurling, but a popular place to observe.
Against glass, vomit.
That depends on how much they drink.
Yeah.
Why is this like that? I don't know.
What's this little apartment?
What?
Oh, sorry. What is it? Did your pens slip? I don't care, I give you a hard time.
Why is that like that?
Oh, that's just because the, when you're looking at this elevation here, when I drew the elevation, you're actually looking at it this way. So this piece here is actually in line with this, but when you tilt the, to do the elevation, it looks like it's extending out.
But it will not?
No, no.
That's not real. That's just an AutoCAD thing.
It's probably not AutoCAD, I'm old, out of date.
It is because the, the front facade is at a, at an angle. And you can see here on this plan...
Oh, I see.
This is the edge of the building, and that, this is your balcony here.
It doesn't come out way.
And we're not going beyond the building at all. In fact, we're setting back within the pier pitch that is existing right now.
I can share with you on the balconies, and we were successful in what was the gator redo to have no, not extend more than four feet, so that it really just was a standing area, couldn't be a gathering area, that kind of thing.
And you can go like the Lutheran church and have it a window that has a protrude.
If you wanted it to be two feet, you could, you could add...
Yeah, we can, if that's...
Just ask the police chief and see, because they, again, this is just a preliminary.
Right, he'll be reviewing that. If that's his recommendation, and if the project would go forward without it, I think the owners would accommodate that.
Well, and it's also the fire chief. I mean, as I recall, with, with the Gator Building, it was the fire chief, you know, plotting out how many feet, how many square feet, which then drives how many individuals can be on that deck.
Right.
And on and on and on. So as a mode of egress.
I know we, if we, we're always concerned about failure of decking, that we overdesigned it incredibly to absorb the loads that the students create.
Is that concrete? Let's see, is that right? No, that's not it. The decks would be what material? Pre-storsted concrete or...
Well, these are probably, it's a rubber membrane with some decking material on top of it.
What we'd probably be doing is it would be a wood deck, because it's extended out, there's nothing below it, so we don't need to, with the exception of on the second floor, then it would be, we'd have the membrane roofing, and then over top of it, probably a weathered wood, or we may consider a paver, a stone paver. It's going to be, it's going to be dependent on budget, what the budget will allow. But it'll be, it'll totally be wood or concrete paver.
And on the first, on the first floor, the pavers, but pavers up? Pavers up to the fourth floor?
I don't see that. I only see the balconies on this floor, right?
Only on the first floor or second floor?
Well, that's the second, second and third floor.
I don't...
The balcony's there.
I see the...
It's all one.
What looks like a brick wall.
It's balcony, I hear.
Yeah, that's a barricade wall.
Or is it, sorry. Yes, I see that.
If you flip, you've got your balcony here and your balcony here. Under here, I'm going to put a membrane roofing to protect underneath, because this is, you know, it doesn't extend beyond the front.
The front is, okay.
And then we'll either put, say, a concrete paver or a wood decking, or there'll be something on here to protect the membrane. And then here, these, these decks here are over top of these decks, so we don't really need an EDPM roofing or anything over here. So what we'll probably do is we'll either do the, the weathered decking, or we'll do concrete decking.
How about four feet?
And it, and it'll won't extend on four feet.
I mean, I don't know, I'm the only, I'm with Paula. Did you say four feet?
I thought, yeah, that was the maximum that they want.
Because of the numbers and everything?
And pulling it back a little bit or accent it a little bit.
Three feet, was three? I'm sorry, maybe three.
Okay.
The mayor's correcting me.
It's really, it's really...
That's where we landed. And that was for the Gator Building in particular. It landed at three feet.
Okay.
They wanted four, and it got back and forth, back and forth.
That was projected, right?
The four feet...
The three feet beyond the front of the building?
No, that'll be projected.
Correct, to go out to four feet was rejected by council, but to keep it at three feet, 36 inches was accepted, as I understand. You're making me go back to years ago. So whether it's, whether wood decking on for the second deck or not, whatever you end up using, I mean, as I'm looking at this, and, I mean, this looks nice, but it also gives the appearance that the facade of the rail on the deck is brick. And so is that not the case? Could it be wooden? Will it be a wooden rails, wooden railing that's on there?
It's going to be very, up to maybe 36 inches, and then we would change to a railing from 36 to 42. We have to have a guardrail at 42 inches, so we'll do something, we're trying to make the building has this quality of an Art Deco-looking structure. And we're trying to aesthetically...
They were going to do it? Oh, they do have one.
They are going to do a metal deck.
That's going to be a problem.
Depending, that's another design aspect that we'll...
We just haven't gotten that far.
Why am I eyes?
Okay, like I said, I'm just looking at this, and I'm going, well, this, this third-floor deck balcony, whatever, was it going to be brick, the facade of it?
No.
The rail brick or whatever, so it's going to be different.
Yes, right.
It looks like it on the plan that we're looking at.
Yeah, the brick will stop at the second floor.
We just noticed there are decks out the back, and I know you have exterior lighting. But it's pretty dark back there, so this will be...
But we're going to have to, since we have stairs that go all the way down to the parking lot, we'll definitely illuminate the, that stairwell and out to the parking itself.
Anywhere where we have a balcony off of a, off of residence, we'll make sure we put lighting up there so that as well, and again, with the, with the back balconies as well, we can push that back to three feet, if that's...
Less trouble.
And keep it, keep it back, so it doesn't become a part of that.
Safety.
One last question. Oh, we're not having, we're not voting, are we?
No.
Would you anticipate having these ready in the first, for our next meeting? Or are you going to, okay.
Next June, yeah. June to June, they usually rent, is the idea would be.
He was asking about when you would be bringing forward for.
Final reading?
Well, we.
Which is September first.
Yeah, if, if we can get everybody to review it by September first, that would be fabulous.
I don't know there are any guarantees, but.
We can.
We can. Yeah, we can definitely.
Much information is possible.
We've added, we've added the dumpster. I'd be the only comment I have, and we've added the dumpsters since.
I think there are dumpsters there already.
I didn't know, anybody? Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Under Communications, and we've looked at Genesis III Building, Twenty East State, Title Forty-One. If anyone's interested, you might talk with Planning Commission next time, or when it's there, or take some other measures. Okay. City Planner and the Director of DEF, please, any comments?
Not too much this, this afternoon. I'll keep it brief. The sustainability plan's still ongoing. We're expecting to have our, all the input for the update by this Fri-, or next Friday, and then we're going to tweak it and then start working it towards council after our public meeting last month. And that's it for today. I'll keep it brief.
Thank you. Obviously, OU has begun moving, so we're out there. We'll be, I'll be attending a luncheon with OU Community Ambassadors at Baker Center on Friday. And then possible Title Forty-One for Communications, Twelve East Carpenter, might be coming forward here shortly. And then we have also possible lot splits, which might be brought up here, Old Peach Ridge and Zero Richlands, which Paul and I are in Communications with OU to see how that's playing out.
There is a map somewhere that shows that, that what I call quicksand, but it really isn't that problem area in the downtown. We, we did a study when I was, it was maybe twenty, thirty years ago. If I were doing the GIS, it would be there because it's a potential hazard. And I do think that it extends across Carpenter Street that, and if you could find the map, you could dismiss it as a possibility.
We've already removed, or they have already moved twelve fuel tanks from Twelve Carpenter.
Yeah, this is the so-called quicksand that has, I mean, because Sheridan, the Sheridan Hotel would have had to have put its parking, its parking garage that it was doing, and that's where the Berry Hole was and everything else. It would have had to put it on caissons because it was so bad in that area. So, I mean, I think it's definitely a hazard, as much a hazard as flood hazard, except it's not prevalent. So if, you know, if you could find that map and at least say, oh, it's okay, it's not there, because it's intermittent. Thank you. You can find the deed restrictions.
While you were on council, or is that created when you were in the geography program?
It had nothing to do with geography.
It had nothing to do with the university?
No, it had to do with money that was floating around and people that were redoing after all the fires on Court Street, and they decided as they were doing it, they had to explore this problem.
Okay. So the document would be in the city if it.
It's a city document.
Okay.
It's just, it's similar to, but not the same as, about the same vintage as the Franklin Grosvenor slip and all of the boreholes they did. Have you ever seen that map?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, well, it's all slipped now, so it doesn't really matter.
This is eighties you're talking about? Somewhere in the?
Yeah, somewhere in the eighties. But it's, but this one is still active, and I think it was, it was U-Dag, when did U-Dag quit? Sat in the Reagan administration, so it was probably, these guys were out of the South with the Sheridan, and they.
They were going to build a Sheridan there?
Yes.
Sheridan Hotel?
Yes.
Really?
It had, was there Urban Development Action Grant? It was this guy, white suit coat, flapping around, a southern accent, flapping around. It was, yeah, there's a picture of Rick Abel and I, much younger, sitting in a. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. If you can find it, I will.
Sure.
I do have. Okay, then, we have.